I don't need it, you'll need it.
I don't need it.
Okay.
After all these years, still don't understand what's going on.
Swear to God.
Yeah, but I mean... I don't even know how to take calls on it.
I know. I've been trained for one thing, that in the letter on the first page, you want it to be an unqualified audit, which, and if you hear that magic word, then you're good.
That's what the minutes...
And that's what the minutes really need to say.
Is everyone here to wish us happy holidays?
I'm sure. That would be my guess. The Arts Commission is here. We got a group today. Oh, there, we'll get you?
Yeah.
No, I think she got that.
What is he talking about?
I think that.
Realizing...
It's actually 7:02. Okay, yeah, no, I think we'll be okay.
That's how I am.
Oh, okay. Good, how are you? Good, getting ready for Christmas. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I enjoy it a little bit.
I think that should, then we'll find out.
Yeah, yeah, sleep now. Thursday, this Thursday, I mean, I'm still on deck, but I'm just taking a couple of vacations this week, and then I have 27, seven inductions, getting to the 29th of this Tuesday night.
I haven't heard anything from anybody.
She's really...
Well, good evening, everyone.
All right, you're right.
Been asking to take a seat, and we'll get the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, December 15th, 2014, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Lennon...
Yes.
Martin...
Yes.
Polika...
Here.
Piana...
Here.
Mary Culture...
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What's council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented. Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Polika. Any discussion? Sherilyn, one more time?
Council members Lennon...
Yes.
Martin...
Yes.
Polika...
Yes.
Piana...
Yes.
Mary Culture...
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda as presented is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and we have four presentations this evening. The first one from the Ferndale Public Schools. Trustee Amy Butters is here from the school board. Good evening.
Good evening. I had some late-breaking news that Chief Collins was sharing with me, so I had to write down a few things. Okay. Good evening, I'm Amy Butters, and I'm here representing the Ferndale School Board, and I'm just, have just a few bits of information that I want to share with everybody tonight about what's going on in the schools. I've got six bits of information. My first one is, starting in the fall of 2015, Ferndale Schools is going to be offering a Montessori class, and there's already been some news out there about this program. It's for kids ages six to nine, so those are kids in the first, second, and third grades, and they're gonna, you know, these are kids that have, that come from a Montessori preschool background, that are gonna be, that we're thinking are gonna be interested in this program. It's just kind of getting off the ground, and so there's been a few preliminary meetings, and so if anyone is interested in learning more about that, I can give you a phone number if you have a child that's in Montessori preschool program right now, and if you might be interested in that as a first, second, or third grader, that phone number is (248) And we're very excited about that partnership that's starting up. My second point is some dates for you in January and February coming up that I think you will all be interested in. These are a couple of open houses that we're having. On January 21st, it's a kindergarten open house for parents of incoming kindergarteners that are interested in learning more about Ferndale Schools. That'll be at Harding. And then on February 28th, we're having a district-wide open house, and every building in the district is gonna be open, and you can come and tour the buildings, and talk to the staff members, and find out what's going on in Ferndale Schools. So that's gonna be February 28th, that's for any prospective students. Now, you might be wondering, okay, well, in years past, we've had our event called the Extravaganza, which has been sort of our district open house. We're changing that up a little bit. The Extravaganza has been something that was combined with the All-City Concert. We're keeping the All-City Concert, and so that is still happening as it normally has. It's that last Saturday in January, can somebody help me with that date? I'm not sure, I don't have it written down. Does anybody know? We'll look that one up. 31st, thank you.
31st.
January 31st. So that is our All-City Concert, and that'll be in the gym up at Ferndale High School, so it'll be the same as how we've always done the All-City Concert. We just won't have the Extravaganza part this year because we're having, we're changing that format, and we're having it be a district open house in February at the different, at the other buildings. So those are some important dates for people out in the community. My third point, Little Eagles Preschool GSRP, that stands for Great Start Readiness Program. It's a specific type of preschool program that we are offering at Ferndale Schools. We had a new session start just this week, just this, today. Today's Monday, just, today was the first day, and we still do have a few openings for that program, and that is an income-based program, and I have some numbers here. If you're a family of four, and your income is $71,000 or below, you automatically qualify for this program. If you're above that amount, you might still qualify based on some other factors. So if you think that you might be interested in this program, if you have a preschooler that you think would fit in, I'll give you that phone number for that program, (248) And we do have a few openings for that preschool program, and that is housed in Harding, Harding Administration Building. Okay, number four, wanted to tell you, I've mentioned to you before about our new honors program up at Ferndale High School, and this, they just had a meeting to sort of really, really get it kicked off. They had the kids start on it in the summer, sort of a soft opening. Now we had sort of our real kickoff meeting just last week with the parents and the students. This is for students that are in grades nine through 12, and it's a comprehensive and enriched experience for students who are wanting to aim higher, higher in academics, and it's a combination of academic and social and extracurricular programming. And so we've got a lot of kids that are doing, participating in that, and if you're interested in finding out more about that, you can go to our website, and there's a page on the academics page called SOAR Hire, SOAR hyphen Hire. If you go to our website, you can learn more about our honors program, and it's a great way for kids to get a little bit more of a challenge if they're looking for something a little bit more challenging, and also, you know, preparing for college, of course. Okay, number five is, our robotics team at Ferndale High School recently learned that they received some money from the state to cover some of their costs for their team. They got a $3,000 grant that covers their entry fee at their robotics competition, and then a $1,500 teacher stipend. And so we're really excited that they've got some money to help their program. They're gonna be using it for equipment, of course, for their club, and also some travel to cover their travel expenses. And specifically to this group who's here tonight, I wanted to mention that the robotics club is in need of some new mentors. They have some openings, they depend a lot on community mentors that come in. They have teacher coaches, but they also have some volunteer mentors that come in and help them build their robot. And so if there's anybody out there who would, who has the skills to offer, who maybe would be interested in helping our kids with that, it's, they're looking at people to help them, you know, actually learn how to build the robot, people to help them manage their website, people to help them with programming, and also presentations. So those are some areas that they're looking for community mentors for. And so if there's anyone who's interested in that, I'll give you my email address, and I can put you in touch with the right people, and my email address is amy.butters@ferndalschools.org. Okay, and lastly, Coach Collins wanted to make sure that I, Coach Collins, Chief Collins wanted to make sure that I mentioned that the Ferndale High School wrestling team won its first tournament, was it last, over the weekend?
Saturday.
Saturday, and so there were 18 teams that were there, and Ferndale came out on top, right? And so we're very proud of those wrestlers. I want to tell you the names of the six wrestlers that were champions that day. We had Devon Spear, Benny Buckner, Colby Davis, Colby Falls, Danny Collins, and one last one, Shamir...
Borden.
Borden. And so we want to congratulate those young wrestlers, because that's a big achievement for them. I think that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Amy? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
And I'm scooting out, I told the others I cannot stay for the rest of the meeting. There is a Ferndale High School orchestra concert that's starting at 7:30 tonight over at the auditorium, so, you know, it's a busy time for our kids, right, this season, so I'll be heading over there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission, and I see a number of our Arts and Cultural Commission members here.
Mr. Mayor, I'll kick this off.
Please.
About a year ago, we put an emphasis on re-establishing the Arts and Culture Commission and chartered a revitalized group to go forth and do a few things, and then we asked them to come back at the end of the year and report out how they've done. I'm very pleased to report that the amount of work that this group has done has been truly outstanding, as you'll see in this presentation. They've gone through a cycle of taking community feedback of the kinds of arts and interactions with arts and culture that we want to see in this community, on top of putting on a very aggressive number of events this year as well, and have a very aggressive and impressive number of events for next year as well. So I'll turn it over to Jeanie and Francine to go through their slide deck.
Thank you.
Amy.
About a year ago, we reformed the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission, and we all want to thank the mayor and the council for trusting us with this. We know it's a responsibility, and we're working hard to live up to that responsibility and make a good showing. So we're looking at this point to increase the visibility of the Arts Commission, because nobody's heard of it for so long. So what we've been doing so far...
Sure.
Okay, in January 2014, we reinstituted the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission, and what we wanted to do was, we wanted to take stock of the needs of the city and the areas of arts and cultural outreach, and to bring program development based on that assessment. We formed a team of appointees who include Tim Brennan, Mark Burton, Sharon Chess, Jeanie Davis, Francine Hatcham, Sherry Kuzman-Martin, Wagner Whitehead, and Joanne Wilcock. Have I forgotten any of you?
So... A mighty group.
We did form a mission statement, and it is the mission of the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission to advise the city council of the artistic and cultural needs of the community, fostering arts programs and events that engage community members and local businesses, building a vibrant cultural environment to the community of Ferndale. Damn, we sound good, don't we? So we did a public survey of the residents of Ferndale. We did it over a period of a couple of months this summer. We wanted to see who wanted what. People who wanted visual arts formed a large section. People who wanted media, is that the black, or is that performing?
Performing.
Performing. The largest amount wanted performing. And to break it down even a little further, or is it broke down further? Okay. To break it down a little further, almost everyone wanted an orchestra, and we've been working on forming a band. The people who are in the know say a band is much easier to do than an orchestra. We are, Sharon Chess and Joanne's brother, Tim, are working on putting together a band for us. Some of the other areas we've gone into are, we brought back Music in the Park, that was way high on the survey, it was to bring back Music in the Park, and to accommodate the desire for visual arts, we've begun, we're beginning a gallery show in January to hang art at City Hall. One of the other things that we brought back, and this was the brainchild of Francine, that we'd never tried before, was Salon Sundays. I'm gonna turn that over to Francine.
As well as Music in the Park.
Okay. Salon Sunday is something that, it's a replica of the Paris Salons with Gertrude Stein and Alice B. Toklas and all the artists in that time. We're trying to recreate that atmosphere by once a month having an artist group come in, perform, and talk about their performing. We had a jazz group, the Tom Dennis Trio was our first Sunday, our second Sunday was Josh James Duo, and what they do is they tell us about their craft. They talked about how to improvise with jazz, they opened it up to the audience, and it was just a real nice conversation, and we're doing that. Next, in January, we're having Jay Kaplan, who's gonna do a Broadway cabaret, and then in February, we're having the cast of Women on the Verge of a Nervous Breakdown to come and do their cabaret also at. And we have them at Dino's, and we want to pay the entertainers, because we feel it's very important that people do get paid for their work. A lot of times, people think that we're having so much fun that we don't need to be paid, and so that's why we have Concert in the Park, and we have Salon Sundays, we're doing our best to pay these peoples and the performers, so they do feel important. We had two concerts, Music in the Parks last year, we're gonna go for four this year, and we're doing really well with the performing arts, 'cause that's what the people wanted.
And apparently, we have a Facebook page, look for us on Facebook...
Apparently, or actually?
At the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission, to find out what we're doing next. These are scenes from Music in the Park, we had Ray Dillaha and the Miracle Men, and it was very well received. Beforehand, Dan Martin and I went around and knocked on doors and had little flyers telling people in the area surrounding the park that we were gonna be doing this, and kind of apologizing for the noise ahead of time, and so many people were saying, oh, that's great, you're bringing that back. So we, and also to raise funds, we did two things, well, I can't talk about one of the things. The other thing we did was, we sold hot dogs and...
So now that's what we want to know about you, now.
Well...
For donation!
There you go.
But we sold hot dogs, et cetera, and we raised money with that. And that was the other Music in the Park scenes from that. And these are scenes from Salon Sunday, that was Linda Pickle, am I saying that right? Yeah. And we had a very good, and Joshua James was in November. We deliberately aren't having one in December, because everything else is going around. And again, to raise funds, we passed around the hat for these things. So what we have coming up in 2015, a lot of things have to be hinged on raising funds, because, you know, the money doesn't go on trees, and I seriously doubt that council is gonna, you know, move to write us a check. So Francine, I'm gonna let you talk about the act of them.
I'll just take a minute to bring this on. It's like a bolathon or a walkathon, but it's an act of fun, and it's 10 hours of acting, and we're putting it on February 7th, and we're trying to have, we have the school board represented, we have the library board, we have the city council with Dan coming in, we have Sherry Wells as Sergeant of Arms. But we are having different groups represented for that, and it's a fundraiser, and we did it about 10 years ago, and we made almost $1,000, so we're hoping to double or triple it this year. But we are working on that, and be looking for us to knock on your door for five bucks.
Gotcha.
That's it.
We'll also be doing art displays at City Hall, as I mentioned earlier. Mark Burton is, Mark...
What, do you want to, no, okay.
He's working with Michael Leary to put that on, and Michael has been absolutely great, 'cause before Michael got involved, I didn't think it'd be possible. We're working on a Ferndale band, as I said, we'll have four Music in the Parks, as Francine said, Salon Sundays will be ongoing, and again, this is with the amazing help of Michael Leary, we're talking about doing a very small, Ferndale-only artist art fair in the portico surrounding this building. And also, we still have to give away two scholarships that we had gotten money for, so we're gonna give them to a deserving student. Oh, that's it.
Excellent.
So again, I would just wrap up to say, I think clearly this group succeeded the mandate we sent it out with, they've really done a terrific job, I think, with very limited resources, and have been very creative, and definitely, I think, added to the cultural, musical, and performing arts kind of offerings that we have in this city, so I think it's a welcome addition to be back.
Here, here. Congratulations on a great year. Look forward to next year. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right, our next presentation, the Jack and Annette Aronson Boys and Girls Club of Oakland County, which is the Ferndale unit of the Boys and Girls Club over at the Kulik Center, is here just to update us on what's been happening over at the Boys and Girls Club. Brett Sander, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be with all of you tonight. It's, a lot has changed in a year. I was looking at April, and I know she's gonna be leaving soon, and something exciting happening in your life, but something over this past year has been something that's been very powerful, too, which was the commitment that you guys led in coming to the Boys and Girls Club, and seeing if we could create a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and being able to be present in the Kulik Center, and being able to serve kids ages six to 18 years of age. And there were good questions when we met a year ago, to make sure that we did this in the right way, and we're excited to let you know that our expectations have been exceeded in terms of who we're reaching by a multiplier of five. We have on any given day 60 to 70 kids who are now coming to the Boys and Girls Club at the Kulik Center. We dedicated that a year ago in honor of Jack and Annette Aronson, who are really committed to this just recently. They purchased a whole lot of cooking utensils, because we have a great healthy lifestyles program in teaching kids to cook, and we've been really welcomed in the neighborhood. For those of you who don't know, we opened here at the Ferndale Middle School and High School, and we were invited by a secretary who looked out at the window and saw kids sitting on the curb and with no place to go. And we started in 2005, and the partnership between the Ferndale School District has been tremendous. The police department, Jill, has been outstanding in terms of being able to navigate and allow us to be able to serve the kids in this community in a significant way. And I don't know if I mentioned it, our annual membership fee is $25 a year, and we make sure that nobody has a difficulty in terms of getting over that hurdle. So often, we're in a position to scholarship those programs. I feel like every time I'm in front of you, it's like old home week. I was a resident of Ferndale for almost a decade and a half, and so we mandated that our unit director had to live in Ferndale, just kidding, but she does. And Rachel Frank has a little bit to share with you this afternoon, this evening, about the programs here at the Boys and Girls Club.
Good to see you, Rachel.
Good to see you, too. So a little bit, I know Brett talked that we've more than tripled our attendance even since opening last year, so that's been amazing, and some of our most popular programs right now, that we get the most members in attendance is our cooking, for sure. I mean, it is a competitive time to get into that kitchen and make some real things, not just cooking up or boiling up some pasta or anything, they're making quality stuff and things that they can take home and maybe make a little snack for themselves, or a meal for their family, so that's incredibly popular.
Can we competitively come eat?
We don't have the competitive eating, but they definitely like to share, but to get in that door, it's competitive again, and it's, our six to 18-year-olds are in that kitchen, together, learning from one another, so that's incredibly popular. We also have our teen basketball program that is very popular among our teens. We also have Power Hour, which is where club members can come in and get some academic assistance, and if they don't have any homework to do, we have a ton of academic games, or different activities to kind of support them in their, you know, work as they're trying to increase their academic potential. And we also have a tutoring program as well. If you are interested in being a tutor, please come contact us at the club. The club number is (248) 990-3978. You can also find us online. If you want some more information, you can also pop by, but that is, we are looking for tutors to increase our tutoring program, 'cause that is one of our most effective academic programs, absolutely. Brett already talked about our membership fee, $25 for the year for our members, and with our increased attendance, we have recently capped, met our capacity for teens currently, so that's ages 13 to 18, and then we're looking, it should open up again in March, to have some flexibility there. But yeah, we have great members attending regularly, and it's, I know Brett already said it, but it has been a dream, working with Jill and with the city, and everything is just, you know, it really works well, and I'm a happy camper and so, so happy to be a part of this stuff.
Glad to hear that.
One of the benefits, I've been the director for coming up on 15 years this coming year, and one of the benefits is having the opportunity to see a young man like this grow up at the club. And I remember Mike Lennon's dad, Bernie, being a tremendous supporter of the Boys and Girls Club from its inception, and I want to have you have the opportunity to hear from Antoine. Antoine, I remember when he was just a little guy, but the thing that has not changed is the smile. He always lights up a room, and he is on our staff now as a Boys and Girls Club alum and is on staff, and I was sitting over there, and I said, do you have anything you want to share? So that's the notice he got. And, but we're glad to have him here to share with you tonight.
Antoine, welcome.
So yeah, I'm Antoine Giraud. I've been going to Boys and Girls for like six, seven years, middle school through high school, and I can honestly say the Boys and Girls Club is a very positive place to go. Like, it shows you that there's better opportunities out there, instead of just being in the streets and getting yourself into trouble. So you can come to a place where you can figure out yourself, figure out the things that you like, figure out what career you want to get into, and you have wonderful staff like Brett and Rachel to help you do that. It's like, there's a family, it's a place to go, like a second home. If you have nowhere, if, like, there's some children out there that not really stable at the house, they can always come to the club, where it's just none but different types of children and different staff members just there to overwhelm you with fun and love, basically. So it's, I'm happy to be a part of Boys and Girls Club, and I know my journey don't stop from here, I know they will always have my back growing up. When I have my family, I can send my children to the Boys and Girls Club.
Excellent.
Going on process.
That's wonderful. Thank you, thanks for sharing that, man.
And just in closing, and I don't know if there's any questions that need to be answered tonight, and we're ready to do that as well, but the powerful piece is to be able to see kids, the commitment was made at this table to reach kids ages six to 18. The powerful partnership we had with the school district worked for a long time, it mattered. We were able to reinvest $125,000 in college scholarships into students in Ferndale. But the opportunity to be able to serve kids under the age of 13 or 12 that don't attend the middle school and the high school allows us to reach them younger, and we know that if a kid is reading at grade level at age, in the fourth grade, we know they're likely to graduate. We know all of the factors that allow that to happen. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and your commitment to the youth in the community, and if there's any way that we can strengthen what we're doing, we're always open to suggestions. So, thank you.
Any questions, the council?
No. No. Thank you.
No, appreciate you coming tonight, and yeah, congratulations on the success. Appreciate it very much. Excellent, our final presentation this evening is our Downtown Development Authority, and of course, being December, there's always lots of things going on in our downtown, and Christina is here to tell us about them.
Final things for the week, basically. So first, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to the Holiday Ice Festival this past Saturday, it was great turnout. The weather was really good for people to come out, it wasn't so good for the ice sculptures to stand very long, but it was great to see them while they were here. And I want to give a big shout-out to the big man himself, Santa, because he was there all day and did a great job, and we had, I think we clicked over 700 photos. So he did a lot of photos that day. And I do want to mention that photos are up online and are available for people to download now or if they would like to order their prints right from the site, which is You can get to that link easily as well through our website and also our Facebook posting, too. And our website's downtownferndale.com. We also are selling, or still selling, our little ornament for the year. We kicked this off with holiday hoof and we still have some left in our office as well as they are available at Blooms by J.R. Designs, state-of-the-art framing and gallery, and just for us. They are $5, so a nice little stocking stuffer if you'd like to pick one up. And then last but not least, I want to mention that we have our Merry Moonlight Madness this Thursday. We have quite a few of our retailers that will be open late, so it's a late night, ladies' night, and late date shopping. So get out there, get your last items off of your list, have a lot of fun while doing it, because many of our businesses who do participate also make it a lot of fun when you go in. And many are going to be open until nine o'clock, but it is up to them as to what time they'll be open. So just kind of inquire when you are out and about. We will have all the information posted on our website and on the Facebook page as well. Thanks again for everybody for this holiday season. It has definitely been a big, strong one for our businesses. We've seen great success, starting with Small Business Saturday and now through the Holiday Ice Festival. We want to keep that going. I want to wish Sherilyn best of luck in the next adventure in life. And also, everybody, because I'm sure I will not see you before that unless I pass you in the streets, happy new year and we look forward to 2015.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone have questions of Christina while she's here? All right. Thank you. I said there were only four presentations, but we actually have a sneaky fifth presentation that we would like to put in here if you don't mind, if you would indulge, Council. And April, are you going to introduce that?
Actually, Michael has something.
Oh, Michael. Oh, you didn't let me do that. Thank you. Okay. So it's become a little bit of an annual, not an annual tradition, a tradition around here, that when people that we love leave us, we shower them with a little bit of love. So first of all, I have a proclamation that I would like to read, because if you haven't heard, at our last meeting, I think we announced that Sherilyn is going to be leaving the employee of the city of Ferndale to move on to greater adventures in Milwaukee, of all places. And we wish her great luck, great luck there. So let me read the proclamation first, and it says that I, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to Sherilyn Brown for her dedicated service as city clerk from 2007 to 2014. Sherilyn has served the city with enthusiasm and efficiency throughout her tenure as city clerk. Her integrity and commitment to excellence is evident in her work. Her accomplishments as city clerk are too numerous to list, but include improving the election process, implementing electronic council packets, streamlining licensing and processes, and initiating the transition to a more digital city clerk's office. Sherilyn Brown is a credit to our community and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate her achievement and thank her for seven years of committed service to the residents of Ferndale. We will miss her engaging personality, her positive attitude, her unflagging professionalism, and we wish her well in all her future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
It's cold in Milwaukee, so you'll need a Ferndale sweatshirt for one and other gifts as well.
Thank you very much. Can I just say a couple words?
Of course you may.
I've said it before and I'll say it again, it has been a pleasure and a privilege to work for this and former councils. I had a whole bunch of things I wanted to say, but I won't make it. It's hard to leave. This has been the best job I've ever had. It's been the most challenging. I've had the most support from the most wonderful group of people. The professionalism I have learned from them, and not just council, but the citizens, the businesses here. It has been so fun getting to know everyone and working with everyone here. I know Craig Covey kept saying when I was hired that he just knew I was going to be fun. And it really has been fun to work here. And just, I also just have to say that one of the best things council ever did for this city was hiring April Lynch as our city manager. She has, she has moved us into the next phase of forward progress and has accomplished so much and put such a great management team together. We really do work well and it's very hard to leave them. So I feel like I've accomplished a lot here, so I leave feeling proud of what I've done and I also leave just a better, more experienced person and ready to take on whatever challenges come my way. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, now it's your turn. This is call to the audience. This is your opportunity to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak to those items when we get to them. Three minutes. Give us your name and your address and address council on anything that you would like.
If I may, wear two hats tonight, and the first hat is the senior hat. Thanks to the Ice Festival on Saturday, we seniors were able to sell cookies at Dino's once again, even though there's no contest anymore, but there were no rules for us to break, so that was fine. So this year, as you know, we do a different cause every year, and this year was to donate to the Elks Club for the Hanging with the Heroes program, to send things to the soldiers. And I'm really tickled to say that we seniors raised $470 for that. Yeah. All the ladies sat there all day at Dino's and as usual, Virginia and I went up and down the street and inside the bars and collected from the bars. And I got to say something, nobody is more generous than a day drinker. That is just my. We collected 60 bucks in Danny's. And for my other hat, I would like to report on the historic home tour that we had on Saturday. I worked on it, Gary Andrews, of course, is the president, and Gary Andrews and Greg Polica and myself, we worked on it. We have five of the most spectacular homes and every single one of our homeowners was absolutely into it. If you ate your way from home to home, you'd gain 10 pounds during it, right? And the homes were just exquisite. Our sponsors were absolutely great. We had some very generous sponsors. So it turned out that we made a very nice profit. So it turned out into a wonderful evening and I think that's so good for Ferndale.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeannie. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Christy Faulkner. I'm here with the Ferndale Association of Invested Residents. And I would like to make an announcement that we have joined together with the Renaissance Vineyard Church on a food and clothing drive. So today was the first day of the drive. We're asking for people to submit donations of non-perishable food items as well as warm winter clothing that will be passed out during the warming center that the church will be hosting January 1st through the 12th. Some items that are of particular need, obviously, winter coats. Winter is upon us. I know it's kind of warm out today, but winter will be coming. And some other items that people might not normally think of, socks, underwear, things of that nature, to hand out to the people that will be visiting the warming center. If you would like to make a donation of either clothing or the non-perishable food items, you can drop them off at the Renaissance Vineyard Church, which is located at 1841 Pinecrest Drive. If you have any questions about the donations, you can also call the church at (248) 545-4664. A couple of other opportunities as well, during the warming center, which is January 1st through the 12th, we're also, sorry, we're also accepting donations of fresh fruit, things that could be handed out and easily taken at breakfast time. So if you're interested in dropping off any fresh fruit or things of that nature, you can deliver them January 1st through the 11th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. But otherwise, this week, we will be collecting, today was our first day, tomorrow you can drop off between 10:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Renaissance Vineyard Church, and then Wednesday and Thursday from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. This binder, along with its 31 exhibits, is also slated to be heard by the State of Michigan on January 12, 2015, alongside the reference file that I presented this council on November the 10th. I'm going to leave that as is. I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Same to you, sir.
Same to you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Robert Meacham. I'm here to discuss opening a tattoo shop, Twinfish Tattoo. I've been in contact with Ms. Lynch today and over the past weeks. So I'm renting a suite in the McColl Building across the parking lot and I've run into a location requirement issue. I just want to present a few arguments in favor of the location of my tattoo shop. The location requirements of the ordinance regulating body art salons, according to my research, are not relevant to the overall purpose statement, which is to protect the health and general welfare of citizens who is afraid of disease has been improved through the use of needles and body piercing equipment. However, the location of the tattoo shop within the 500-foot radius of the protected buildings doesn't mean that the patrons will necessarily come in contact with any needles. Therefore, it appears to be based on old prejudices against body art. For example, the tattoo shop currently operating across the street in closer proximity than the one I plan to open, to my knowledge, there have been no complaints regarding the health and safety of library patrons. My situation is specific. You cannot see my tattoo shop from the library or from any public space. It's inside the McColl Building. It has no windows, just a door. It's temporary, one year, part-time, appointment-only services by me alone. Clientele includes only my friends, family, and referral from my friends and family. Some potential solutions that came to mind when reviewing the ordinances, by simply removing library from Section 7397 of the ordinance, not only will it make my proximity acceptable, but also the tattoo gallery across the street will no longer be in violation of the location requirements. Perhaps issue a temporary waiver, the Twinfish Tattoo to operate for one year. And lastly, amend the distance requirements to, in the ordinance, to less than 89 feet. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. And I'll just maybe say to the city manager, I believe, I'm not the only one on council, this is probably the first time I've heard of this issue, but if you could maybe just draft a brief memo for us about the background and maybe address some of his potential issues for us, that would be great. Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that council views as routine and we enact in one motion unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. However, the public will be allowed to speak to them if they like. But let me read them now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held November 24th, 2014. Item B is the approval to reappoint Doug Werner to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2017, and Kate Baker and Kevin Petrino to the Planning Commission for terms ending December 31st, 2017, as submitted by our Community and Economic Development Director. Item C is the approval of the $10,509 quote from Commerce Controls for the purchase and installation of software upgrades to the OIT computer at the Hilton Road Pumping Station to be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund Repair and Maintenance Account. Item D is the approval of $243,000 bid by MK Painting of Wyandotte for maintenance and miscellaneous improvements to the 3 million gallon water storage tank to be charged to the Water Sewer Fund Capital Account. Item E is the approval to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the engagement letter with Plant Moran for the services of the Finance Director/Treasurer for an additional $25,000 from approximately January 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2015, for the specific purpose of a transition from the New World Systems to BSNA financial software. Item F is the approval of a special event permit for the 2015 Arts at City Hall from January 15, 2015, to November 30th, 2015. Item G is the approval of a special event permit for the BBQ Rib Burnout Number Eight, hard to believe, on Saturday, January 31st, 2015, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Item H is the approval of the software as a service agreement with Seamless Docs for a one-time project cost not to exceed $8,500 and an ongoing annual cost of $4,950 will be proportionately distributed amongst the accounts noted. Item I is the approval to fill a police lieutenant position. Item J is the approval to pay an invoice from WW Williams for $3,615.05 for the repair of E11-4, as submitted by our fire chief. And finally, the approval of the bills and payroll submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of our council finance committee. What is the pleasure of council on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda, either by council or members of the public? All right, seeing none, Sherilyn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers, Martin.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is the consideration to appoint a provisional district library board members. So Dan, are you going to introduce that item?
I'm certainly happy to.
Sure.
You'll recall several months ago, the city elected to participate in a district library agreement, which was authorized under the District Library Establishment Act and together with the Ferndale Public Schools, along with the consent or approval of the Ferndale Library, created the Ferndale District Library and entered into a district library agreement. That agreement provided that the initial provisional library board would be appointed by the city. So by, it's my understanding that the state librarian has approved the district library agreement that the parties entered, and so under the agreement, the city has the prerogative to appoint the initial board members, provisional board members to that. And before you, this evening, is a proposed slate for your consideration.
All right. And I see our library director here this evening. Do you want to come up and just sort of, maybe, I know Dan mentioned about the state approval, but just talk a little bit about what's happened over the course of the last month before we get to this? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's all right. Well, we received good news. The state librarian, Randy Riley, did approve our district library agreements with no changes. So we are all set to officially transition to become the Ferndale Area District Library in partnership with the city of Ferndale and the Ferndale Public Schools, effective December 31st. So I believe the proposed slate is our current sitting library board, which is Pat Dengate, Judeen Bartos, Monique Herzig, Tiffany Gagne, Frank Castrenova, and who am I forgetting? Adrian Gilmore.
Adrian Gilmore, yeah.
And then part of the District Library Establishment Act is that there are actually seven board members. So the seventh candidate on the slate is Kevin Yezbick, who is here with us today.
And Kevin, do you want to just come on up and introduce yourself? We'd love to have a chance to say hi.
Kevin has volunteered for the library in many capacities over the years. He was the president of the Friends Group at one point, and he's been serving on our Building and Finance Committee for several years now, and he is also a professional librarian. So. and Finance Committee for several years now. And he is also a professional librarian. So he lends a lot of great knowledge and experience to everything we do.
Truly does. Hi, Frank.
Hi, Kevin Yezbik. Live over on Silman Street. I've been in the public library world for 10 years, and I recently took a different career path. Still using my library skills, but now I'm working for Rock Ventures. And I just wanted to continue to contribute to the community and contribute to the library world. So when I was given notice that they were looking for a seventh member of the board, I was happy to put my name forward. I've been in contact with Mayor Coulter.
Yep.
But I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Excellent. Thanks. All right. Is there any comments or questions of council?
I move to confirm the appointments of Judeen Bartos, Frank Castrenova, Patrick Dengate, Tiffany Gagne, Adrian Gilmore, Monique Kerzig, and Kevin Yezbik to the provisional library board for the Ferndale Area District Library.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Dan, remind me, how long does the provisional board sit?
Your Honor, it sits until the next school election, which—I'm not sure when that is.
I believe it's 2016.
November of 2016?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Congratulations on the district library, I would add.
Thank you very much.
Cheryl Lynn, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That board is confirmed. Moving on to the next item of business, which is a consideration of a recommendation to appoint the city clerk. And April, do you want to introduce that item?
As you know, as we talked about earlier today, Cheryl Lynn has tendered her resignation here with the City of Ferndale, which leaves open her position. At the last meeting, council did authorize the permission to fill that open position. And with that, this is a unique position in the fact that council actually has the appointing authority, just as they do with me and Dan Chris. So it's actually council's decision on who the next clerk is. I actually went ahead and made a recommendation. Marnie McGrath has been the deputy clerk for almost five—over five years now. You know her well. She's, you know, participated in a lot of the things that we do here. She is qualified for the position. She's a great part of our team. She has—the she's also completed the Master Academy for Clerks of Michigan. She is very, very qualified to fill that position, and it would be my recommendation that we take a look at putting Marnie in that position. If we were to do that, I would recommend a three-month review and a six-month review to ensure that that fit works well within what the council is looking for. It is to be noted that this is your choice, and if you'd like to go out, we can do that as well. But that would be my recommendation. And before we go out and recruit, I wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you.
I would like to move that we promote and appoint Marnie McGrath as the city clerk for the City of Ferndale, effective January 1, 2015.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Comments? Questions?
Good choice.
No-brainer.
I do have one comment in relation to this. I think Marnie is absolutely the right choice for this job, and we're so lucky to have her, as much as I hate seeing Cheryl Lynn go. You know, I think she's going to do fantastic work. But I'm going to offer a subsequent motion after this, that for department head recruitment in the future, we look both internally and externally. I don't have any qualms about this decision here today with Marnie here. I don't know of any imminent department head vacancies, so I think now's the time to set that direction.
We can make them any time we want.
What?
We can do this.
It's almost Christmas.
Not bearing on this motion, but I'm going to have one that follows.
All right, yeah.
I do have a question about finding a deputy clerk. And would the hiring process be the same for the regular city clerk?
It'd be a little different, just based on the position alone that would fall under my jurisdiction. But what we're doing actually, as we do with all open positions, we're taking this as a 90-day period to take a look at what the city really needs. Anytime we have a vacancy, we stop and go, is this position really what we need? Obviously, the clerk's position is unique in the fact that it's—we—
Required by law?
Yes, required by law. And there's so many, you know, parts of that that just make it a no-brainer. It's hard to contract that out or anything like that. So we are taking this opportunity with Marnie's skill sets as well to take a look in—that take a look at how that fits best within the city and what our needs are. But we will be filling that position in some capacity, but it won't be probably until I come back from maternity leave.
First of all, I do think it's a no-brainer, and we're lucky to have Marnie here, and we all work with her very closely. And so I have no reservations at all about making Marnie our city clerk. I do support the notion, though, that going forward, at the department head level, we should—we should probably create that as a policy or a motion, and I'm supportive of that. So—and I agree that this is a good time to do it, because I'm not aware of anybody that's leaving. So—
Okay.
We've got a great team. It's not a reflection of anybody.
Wonderful team, and that's—I'm comfortable supporting Marnie and happy to support her. Cheryl Lynn, would you like to call the role, please?
I would love to. Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations, Marnie.
And I would like to move that the City of Ferndale adopt a recruitment policy in relation to vacant department head positions, that the recruitment process would include a search of both internal and external candidates.
I support.
Is there discussion?
Do we need to put that—I guess that will come down as a resolution, but that—does that need to go into some sort of employee procedures or anything?
Yeah, I'll make sure that Jenny is aware of that as we move forward, that it's put in—in a procedure.
Okay.
Yeah, employee handbook procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Cheryl Lynn, would you call the role?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That motion is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item C is the consideration of a special event permit for a menorah display at the Kulak Community Center. And— April, are you going to introduce that, or is—oh, Joe, I'm sorry. Yeah, Joe's going to introduce that.
Mayor and council. On December 3, we were approached by Rabbi Herschel Fineman with a request to erect a menorah on public property and conduct a Hanukkah lighting ceremony. He isn't attendance tonight, and I think I'd like to let him speak more to his event and what he's requesting.
Okay, that'd be great. Rabbi?
Rabbi, could you come up?
Come on up. And the microphone does go up, because I see—you're a tall gentleman.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak. My name is Rabbi Herschel Fineman. I shop, play, visit, broadcast a radio show, teach classes, and hope to sometime in the near future live in Ferndale. Former Governor Grant Home referred to Ferndale as a cool city. And looking around and walking the streets, we see that it indeed is a cool city. Coolness implies inclusiveness and tolerance, appreciation for what others do. The menorah is a symbol of religious freedom. It is one which is, when seen, lets the viewer understand that this neighborhood, where this menorah is, is one of tolerance, freedom, liberty, the pursuit of joy and justice. What we propose is a 13-foot-high aluminum electric menorah be placed in front of the Kulak Center for the period of Hanukkah, just prior to, meaning tomorrow, until just after, and since that it is that the day after is the 25th, and things will be closed, then take it down to 26th. And that each day, another candle of the menorah be lit, so as to show an increase in light. And where there is an increase in light, there's an increase in empowerment, there's an increase of awareness, there's an increase that people can get together. On the last night of the holiday, we would like to have a get-together, and I would like to offer an invitation to the mayor to be the speaker at this event on 6 o'clock in front of the Kulak Center, to address the crowd, hopefully. Along with refreshments, the menorah is officially being sponsored by Chazan O'Coffee, and Frank has very much stepped up to the plate as a dedicated member of the Chamber of Commerce here, the Downtown Authority. He's been very, very, very helpful and very excited about this. And I cannot but anything but urge the city council to adopt the recommendation that the menorah be allowed to be erected and this function be allowed to take place. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who's sure to speak on this item, by the way? I should give you the opportunity now. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Pat Sissel. I live in Ferndale in Willington. And I just wanted to piggyback on what the rabbi has said. I brought this before council in 2003 in terms of nativity scenes being allowed on city property. We used to have nativity scene, a Star of David, a menorah, Santa Claus, and a few other secular items possibly—I don't remember what they were—on city hall property. And at one time, the city sponsored very tall nativity items in the median until the Department of Transportation said that was not allowed, and they were moved here. Back in 2003, in fact, I've got the article that was written by—on the Tribune by Mr. O'Connell on the city council vote, and it had been referred at that time to Dan Chris to investigate the laws that are now, unfortunately, around any kind of religious freedom of expression on private or city pro—or public or city property. I have a couple of things I could refer to if anybody wanted to investigate the laws, but the laws do state—the United States Constitution—or, excuse me, the Supreme Court has ruled under the Lemon vs. Kurtzman Act case that they were allowed to present any religious displays, because our constitution allows us freedom of—not from religion, but of religion. And it's not to favor a particular faith. It also mentions having some secular items mixed in the display. A lot of people have some confusion as to what maybe a Christian item would be, thinking a garland, or red or green lights, or a Christmas tree would be it. Traditionally, nativity scenes, crushes with Jesus Christ as his birth, being commemorated at that time of year, would be a Christian symbol. At that time, I believe, they gave our nativity scene to St. James Church to be presented over there, where they felt it was a more appropriate location in a Christian setting. But the laws do state that we may have faith symbols on city property, and we just have to follow the lemon test, basically. And if you want, I have a few other items I could, you know, refer you to, to look up. But at that time, our attorney, Dan Chris, had decided not to do—the allow the items on city property, which the Kulak Center is also part of that. And that was one of the items, was if we didn't want to have it on Nine Mile, to move it over there. And that was one of my points, was that's not really central to our city celebrations. We light up Nine Mile, and now, since that time, the budget was not there. But now we are lit up like, well, a Christmas tree, as some would say. Quite a few out there. But at the time, there wasn't the money to purchase a nativity scene that would be more current. So I would propose that we do allow our constitutional rights under the First Amendment, and allow our menorahs and nativity scenes with secular items to be placed, and celebrate all of our particular choices of religious display that we have a right to do as citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Sure. Fighting over who wants to go. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gaye Tischler. I live at 430 West Troy. My husband is Frank Castrenova, by the way. Just thought I'd throw that in. This should really be a no-brainer. There is more of a Jewish presence in Ferndale. I'm Jewish. My husband is also. He'd be here tonight. He had a work-related event. And I just think it would be a lovely thing to see. I'd love to see it downtown, you know, Christmas decorations. Maybe that'll happen another year. But this would be a great way to kick it off.
Thanks. Thanks, Gaye. Appreciate it. Sure, come on up. Good evening.
Hi, Chana Fineman. That was my husband, and that was my friend. Thanks, just a couple words. I've been privileged to attend these public menorah happenings in many places. The most interesting one is in Philadelphia by the Liberty Bell. And I used to be behind the scenes to make that happen many years ago now. It's—and of course, down in the White House, it's done. But I've done this in Perth, Australia. I've done this even in Wayne State University for three years in a row. And one of the nicest things that we did down there just last year was the Wayne State Glee Club. Not one member was Jewish. Learned all the Hanukkah songs in Yiddish and Hebrew. And it was just really beautiful. And a lot of people came. And it's just a very warm, inviting thing that anybody can really come and enjoy and be inspired to do some—something of light and unity, which are the themes of Hanukkah for any neighbor. That's the idea. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? So maybe at this point, and Pat Sissel brought up the legal aspects of this, Dan, maybe it would be appropriate for you to just give council some guidance in terms of what the law does say around this issue?
Sure. I'd be happy to, mayor and council. And really, the starting point is the First Amendment, and it does provide, in part, that Congress shall not establish any law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And Ms. Sissel referenced an earlier opinion, I think 2003 is correct, that addressed the issue of a city nativity scene that was placed. And the opinion, based on the Supreme Court cases, was that that city nativity scene was an issue that could be construed as a violation of the First Amendment by an endorsement of a particular religion. The cases that are referenced in that opinion reference the lemon test, which is still the law as it relates to the three-part test that's analyzed on that. And then I referenced the Allegheny case, which talked about a crush at the center, or what is viewed as the center of government. In that case, the Supreme Court struck down the crush that was in city of—in city hall. But in that case, allowed a menorah, because it viewed that menorah as being a secular symbol, because it was next to a Christmas tree. And the recommendation that was provided to council back in 2003 was that the city should not be involved in putting forth a particular display that advocated any particular religion. What is before you this evening is a different issue, and it's an application by an individual who is wishing to exercise his rights and rights afforded to him under the constitution of free speech. It does go back, though, and it's still subject to the lemon test, which, you know, is a weighty case of the Supreme Court, and there's a lot of factors that go into consideration of that. But the basic part is, you know, is there a secular purpose? Does it have a principal effect of advancing religion? And is it fostering excessive entanglement between government and religion? And I think what's instructive for council is to consider some of the recent cases that have interpreted that test and applied that test. And the Sixth Circuit, which is the circuit that is binding on Michigan, in the case of Americans United for Separation of Church and State versus City of of Americans United for Separation of Church and State versus City of Grand Rapids, which was a 92 case, in that case upheld, despite a protest, the City of Grand Rapids allowance of a menorah on a city park. And then more recently, just 2012, the Sadowa versus McComb County Road Commission case, which was a crush scene, a nativity scene. In that case, the district court, federal district court judge was overruled by the Sixth Circuit when McComb County Road Commission determined not to allow a nativity scene in the median of Mound Road. And what is appropriate to be considered in this is whether the proposed location constitutes a public forum. Is it a place where people have come to congregate, to sit, to meet, to talk? And I think certainly an argument could be made that the Kulik Center does fit within a public forum for purposes of speech. And some of the other issues as it relates to, in previous cases, is there any type of message of secularism or secular message that's out there? The rabbi did note in his opening remarks about the lights being to promote the tolerance, freedom, liberty, I missed one word, and justice. And certainly, those items would appear to be a secular message. And the location at the Kulik Center also is not at the heart or center of city government, which lessens the suggestion that a reasonable observer, which is the test, would construe this to be an endorsement by the city.
Is there differentiation in some of those previous cases where it was actually public tax dollars, though, expended to put those nativity scenes up versus not?
Well, yes, in the context of not asking public dollars, but establishment by the government, was whether it's a city display, whether it is a city--
City-owned display, is that what you're saying?
That's not the only test. It can be considered a government-sponsored display, even if it's not owned necessarily by the government.
Dan, excuse me, through the chair. So if there was a privately-owned nativity scene out there, or some other religious artifact, they could go through the proper procedures at City Hall here with the application fee of all that, and place it up at the Kulik Center this year?
That is correct. It would go through the same analysis, and the private applicant in that circumstance would be able to make an argument as to why his or her exercise of a message, religious messages are entitled to First Amendment protection, just like nonreligious messages, as to whether or not that's appropriate location. Now, that being said, even if the First Amendment doesn't stand for the proposition that somebody can speak as long as they want, in any capacity that they want, and so as long as it's content-neutral, local government and governments, all governments have the right to provide and implement reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions as it relates to its property. It has to be content-neutral.
Like our three-minute rule at council. So you can say it's three minutes, you just can't say what you can say, right? That's the equivalent, or?
Well--
Or not?
It's a stretch of an analogy.
I'm stretched, all right. Anyway. Dan, a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
So lights, like we have outside of the building now, are those, my understanding is that those are considered secular, so that is not really part of this discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And, but then, you started to sort of make the case that the good rabbi was making that maybe a menorah is secular. Have the courts weighed in on whether a menorah is secular or religious?
No, I think that most of the case law would say that a menorah is not secular in and of itself. But some of the other cases, they're, the Allegheny case, it was placed in conjunction with a Christmas tree, which was noted by the Supreme Court as a secular theme, and in totality, was not viewed as an endorsement of religion by the government.
And then I think I also heard you say, there's a stronger case to be made if it's not at the central building. Could you just expound on that?
Well, again, and again, I'm referring back to the Allegheny case, which did strike down the government in that circumstances, placement of a crush in its City Hall, right at the base of its staircase, which was deemed by the court to be the central or heart of city government. The court said in that case, it really seemed to be located at a preferred space, that other applicants weren't allowed to make any type of display at.
So all of that in its totality helped me answer this very basic question, which you probably already did, but I'm going to ask it a different way. Because Pat's point is, and I think it's true, that the recommendation in 2003 was that we not put up the manger, the crush, at City Hall.
The city's manger, yes.
The city's manger in 2003. And today, I believe your recommendation is that we allow the menorah at the Kulik Center, which is public property. So could you just sort of, and I know you've touched on thesis of this, but could you sort of just highlight for us the differentiation between those two circumstances?
Boiling it down, in that circumstance, formerly, it was the establishment of a nativity scene by the city, which could be argued was an establishment or promotion of a particular religion, contrasted with what is being sought here this evening, which is a private individual's attempt to exercise his First Amendment rights through a nonverbal display, which still has First Amendment protection. It's a menorah as opposed to him out on the, you know, speaking out at that location.
Why are we just getting this on December 15th? Did the government just come to City?
I'm not sure.
Recently, it was April.
And Joe could speak to that.
December 3rd.
We were approached on December 3rd with this item because of the proximity of the holiday request. In the sensitivity of the timeline, we did expedite a special event application. So again, this is private property that's going to be erected on public property, so we did request that they submit a formalized special event application that did define the event, the nature of the event, how it would be erected, how it would be secured, and again, that they would meet the insurance requirements of other special events would be consistent with that. So to complete the special event process would require the approval by City Council. And that's why it's being presented today.
Yeah, Dan.
You know, to the extent that regardless of how council proceeds on this application, it may be appropriate for staff to provide recommendations for going forward on this issue. I mentioned that a party isn't able to, the courts have said, you know, have such a display that it is so large that it precludes others from having an opportunity to have their message. So a framework of time, place, and manner restrictions as it relates to this type of issue might be something which council would like to see on a going-forward basis.
Am I able to speak? I just wanted to say to Mr. Chris, there's a case called Lynch versus Donnelly, and it argued before the United States Supreme Court and decided March 5, 1984. And it had to do with a city's nativity scene, and it had been on public property. And people had brought a suit against it. I believe it was a city-sponsored case. But anyways, the point I'm getting at is, when they were deciding it, the ruling had reversed previous rule, the Supreme Court reversed previous rulings in a vote of five to four, ruling that the display was not an effort to advocate a particular religious message, and had legitimate secular purposes. That was for their crush.
Right. I think in that case, there was a number of secular items. I think two frosty snowmen figures, a couple of reindeer, and a few trees.
But we're speaking of a nativity scene being considered not a, you know, religious item, that had legitimate secular purpose. So as the rabbi is speaking of having the light and the goodwill and all that the nativity or the menorah represents, this particular ruling by the United States Supreme Court says that the crush or nativity has legitimate secular purposes. And it goes on, and I could read further on the decision, if you're interested in hearing it.
He's familiar with that case, but, yep.
So even a nativity scene is considered a secular item. So, you know, as you know with the Establishment Clause and the lemon test under the Lemon versus Kurtzman, that basically, if it's open to one, it's open to all. It should not be prohibiting a religious display or promoting another religious display, and it should allow other secular items. And so even the, you know, the United States Supreme Court says it's a secular item.
Thank you.
So that's all I'm saying.
Dan, I agree that we probably need a policy going forward. We're not going to do it tonight, but probably in years past, it seems like the city doesn't, hasn't articulated a policy about what kinds of restrictions, if any, they want to do around these public displays on public property. I do have another question for you, though, because as we figure out what that policy is, the Lynch case, which she just referenced, you know, I have done some reading on this over the last week, because I didn't know anything about it a week ago, and I still don't pretend to know much about it. But it said that the court rejected the notion that the accompanying sign notifying the observers that the nativity was owned by a Roman Catholic organization sufficiently removed the perception that the government endorsed a religious message. I guess what I read in that is, just because it's privately-owned, it could still give the perception that it's government-endorsed, even if it has a sign that says. So I thought I heard you saying the primary difference between 2003 and now is that this is private and the other one was a city-owned.
That's not the only--
Okay. That's what I want to get at, is what are the distinctions?
That's not the only distinction. And that's, formerly, it was a city-owned nativity scene. Here, there's three, as I indicated, lemon test talks about three items. Is there a secular purpose? Is there a, does it have a principal effect of advancing religion? Is that the message? Or does it constitute an excessive entanglement between government and religion? And so you need to look at each one of those criteria.
Okay.
Um, many other questions?
The liability involved in this is, I don't, we're opening a Pandora's box here by allowing this. I do believe, Dan.
Well, I think that, through the chair, that council, as it relates to certain locations, can implement going forward certain regulations in a content-neutral manner. We talked earlier, or I talked earlier, about the issue of whether or not it is a public forum. I think on balance, the community center is. Certainly, the case law is that sidewalks, streets, and public parks are. And, you know, whether or not council, going forward, wishes to address what constitutes public forums or identify locations that it is providing public forum status to, is something that I think that it could do on another day.
What were those three criteria again? Entanglement with government?
Content-neutral manner and public forum.
What was the first one?
Content-neutral manner.
Secular purpose.
Other questions or comments of council? Lloyd, yes?
Can we, I just have an operational question. My understanding of Hanukkah is that at dusk each night of the festival, that additional candle, or in this case, a bulb, would have to be turned. I'm wondering if that is something that is intended to be done by the rabbi or by city staff because of weekends, night, overtime issues, that kind of thing?
Was that addressed in the special events permit? Or the rab, she's pointing at the rabbi?
Timer.
That's, oh, it's on a timer. Okay.
Well, isn't that smart?
Modern technology.
To that point, though--
Wonderful.
If I may, through the chair. To that point, in the application itself, the costs are on application permit fee, recreational rental fee, and then a total fee is balanced out. But the menorah was be erected by DPW employees. Is there a reason we're not charging for their time?
I believe we can do it during the normal staff time.
I'm trying to reduce entanglement.
Yeah. So--
Yeah, well, I have to say that I have issue with that because if staff is going to take the time to put up a religious symbol, that's taking time out of their day to do city work. So whether the recreation fee covers that cost, I'm fine with that. I'm not sure what that quote-unquote recreation fee is, if it's rental property.
It's rental fee of $50. Does that cover the cost of the salary for the workers?
No.
I'm sorry, was there a question I didn't hear?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. I was asking as more to Lloyd's.
I mean, do we know how long it would take?
Less than half an hour. In 10 minutes, it would stop.
Well, I guess through the chair, maybe to the applicant, is he prepared to put the display up? I may address counsel and pollsters' issue.
Yeah, I don't have any issue if the individual, I mean, we have special events on streets where individuals put up their own equipment. So this, to me, kind of runs into the same issue.
I think he just indicated a willingness to do that.
I think, because you're running into an issue of using city resources for a private event, so to speak.
Yep. Well, yeah, because, for example, Pride, Ferndale Pride, if we're using DPW services to do whatever, Ferndale Pride has to pay that fee. DIY Festival has to pay that fee. You know, we're utilizing that staff, whether it's during the normal work week or the weekend, we're still having, you know, those special events have to pay that. So if this is a quote-unquote special event, I think it needs to follow the same parameters.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think we're in a discussion. Do you want a motion to proceed?
Yes, please.
I would move to approve the special event permit for the menorah display effective December 16, 2014, to December 26, 2014, with a lighting ceremony on December 23, 2014, as detailed by the special event summary and according to the following terms and conditions as listed in the agenda item. I'm assuming I have to read all that?
I support, 16 through the 26.
Move by Martin and supported by Piana. All right. Thank you for that. Additional discussion, comment?
I was raised Roman Catholic, and I now consider myself a spiritualist. So I don't want anyone to think that I'm playing religious favoritism. If you would have asked me a week ago, when this was first requested, I would have said no. To me, the Constitution is clear regarding the separation of church and state. And just so that I'm clear, I have some other issues in regards to "in God we trust" on our currency and "under God in the pledge of allegiance." However, over the past week, I took the time to research the symbolisms of the winter holidays. Obviously, a manger scene is directly connected to Christianity. The menorah is directly connected to Judaism. The meaning of the symbols has not changed over millennium and would be hard to argue. However, a lit decorated evergreen tree and bough or garland are actually pagan symbols to recognize the winter solstice, which in early Christianity was ruled sacrilege, and many still today consider them secular symbols. The evergreen wreath actually started out as the harvest wreath that was hung on doors year-round, long before creation of Christian religions. So I'm brought right back to the two original symbols, the menorah and the nativity scene, and my firm belief in separation of church and state. The request, as I understand it, is for someone-- The request, as I understand it, is for someone within the community to temporarily display a religious symbol on government property. No one is asking or demanding that a religious symbol be permanently placed on government property for eternity. As I understand it, the individual will handle the costs of erecting and removing the display when it is over, and that no city employees will be involved, and if they are, a certain fee would be charged. So from my point of view, I would have to support this request. My humanity dictates that. I can't deny someone the opportunity to express their religious freedom.
No, and I agree with you, Greg, and I'm all for somebody expressing their religious beliefs. Therefore, I'm going to encourage, I too was raised Catholic, therefore, I'm going to encourage somebody to bring a nativity scene. We already gave that one to St. James', so we can't get it back. But, you know, if you got a Buddha, you want to put that up, go through the proper channels, do it, you know? So, you know, I'm going to support it, because if, one thing, I was told we're running into maybe some legal issues if we don't, so I want to avoid that, and I'll support it at this time. But like you said, after the first year, we need a policy.
Well, that's you and me, Mike, because we're...
We're the ordinance committee. I'll have one draft if it's not a napkin.
I support this as well. I would like to see a long-term policy that makes, you know, sense and is in compliance. I don't think this is an endorsement of one specific religion by any means, and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this on a temporary basis.
I follow what the rabbi opened with, that we're about inclusiveness and religious acceptance, and I think law has changed over the last 10 years that addresses the freedom of speech as it pertains to religious displays. And I think the community center is a welcoming city building in which all religions would be available for future displays as we set the policy in the new year. So I'm very supportive as well, despite my nonreligious upbringing.
Do I have to say I was in Episcopal Ian, because we're all kind of confessing, I...
I know. Sorry.
Oh, Catholics confess.
Catholics confess.
I'm being drawn in.
And I, so I guess I would also say that, don't take my questions to be opposed to this. I actually, I agree with the rabbi, and I think this is an appropriate community to display diversity of all types, and I just want to make sure that we're within our legal parameters, because as it turns out, we don't really have a policy, and we've sort of unofficially just not done it since 2003. But we don't have a policy, and we really should, just so that it's clear as people apply to the city to do things of a religious nature, that they understand what's allowed and what's not allowed. So thank you for allowing us to sort of feel our way through this. Don't take that as an unwelcomeness on the part of the city, but I think it was an important discussion that we have, and I think that after the holidays, it would be helpful if our ordinance committee would draft some language that might guide future councils in this sort of situation. The other thing is, I'm very sensitive, although I am a person of faith, that the government never even is perceived as endorsing one over the other, and so that's why I want to be very careful how we do this, that we do it for everyone, or we don't do it for anyone. If we think everybody would be tacky, I don't know, I've seen some displays that are hideous. So I'd be very curious how we end up on it, but I want to make sure that wherever we end up, that it is, gives the message that Ferndale is welcome to all face and no face as people see fit. So I will be supporting it as well.
Well said.
Anyone else? Then Sherilyn, would you call the roll?
Let me do that. Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. And Rabbi, if you need a hand tomorrow, tomorrow, right?
Actually, if you go on the Ferndale forum, you could probably state that you need some help, and there's 1,300 people that will respond.
Thanks for being here. All right, the next item of business is item D, the consideration of a third amendment to the fire protection agreement with Royal Oak Township. And Avery, are you going to tee that one up? Thank you.
We're very excited to report that after, I think, almost nine months negotiation with Royal Oak Township and really the state, as you know, just to back up just a little bit, that Royal Oak Township fell under emergency management as it relates to the state initiative and ended up actually with a consent agreement. So what that did was allowed Royal Oak Township to take a look at all their vendors and their contracts and things of that nature to make sure that they have a balanced budget at the end of the day. So we work very closely with the state, as well as Royal Oak Township, and we are happy to report that they will continue to fire service with the city of Ferndale, which we are very pleased about, and I know that Royal Oak Township is excited to be partners with us as well again. A couple of changes to the contract include, one of the big ones is that Royal Oak Township actually has a levy on their police and fire, they're separate, their police levy and a fire levy, and so what we've done is mirrored the rate of which they bring their levy in for fire to support the costs as it relates to our services. So they're, right now, we're looking at a goal of a $250,000 a year revenue stream, which is comparable and the same as Pleasant Ridge. Their levy right now, they believe, will bring in anything between $237 to $250,000. We're getting very close to that, to that mark. Their audit firm can't give, obviously, as you know, a straight answer as it relates, but it won't be less than 237, and the goal is to get it to 250,000. The other significant aspect of this contract is actually puts us in a better position is that they will continue on moving forward with the city of Ferndale, and a two-year notice will be required for termination. So that was a big adjustment, which is great, because before, I think it was like 60 days or, I think, between 60 and six months. So both of us are, both Royal Oak Township and the city of Ferndale are very pleased to be able to be partners, and we're really happy that we could work with the state and Royal Oak Township to keep that contract. So I believe this went in front of their board on December 11th.
The only question I have is what is the state's ability to end this contract on the township's behalf, even though there's a two-year commitment?
A two-year notice?
With a two-year notice?
Sure, well, with any emergency management, township, they're in a consent agreement. If that moves in a different direction, and they have to go through actually getting emergency manager, I think at that point, everything is null and void.
Well, my opinion is, is that I really am glad that you've negotiated a two-year, which gives us a lot more leeway time to plan, but it's sort of somewhat weak because the state can do whatever they want, you know, without a lot of notice.
They can, but you have to remember one of the unique situations that Royal Oak Township is in is they actually have a levy that supports, they can only pay for fire from that, so there really would be no reason for the state coming to do that. It is protected in a different manner than that capacity.
Chief, anything to add to this?
Nope.
Other comments or questions of council?
Nope, just staffing stays the same?
Yes.
Everything stays the same?
Yes.
A motion?
I move to approve the third amendment to the fire protection agreement between the city of Ferndale and the township of Royal Oak.
Support. Moved by Pollock and supported by Martin. Final comments, questions on this item?
Thank you. Please express our thanks to Royal Oak Township.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I was just going to look and say, I think this is the last time I'm going to say. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our next item of business is called a council. I see the police chief there, and I see gifts on the table, so you might have something to say this evening, chief?
Again. Again.
Thank you, chief.
Derek, anything from economic development this evening?
We did not get your presence either, but also from the CDC department, I would say thank you to Sherilyn. My departments have worked closely since I got here, and she's a big help to me, and her role when I got here and to our department, I would say. So we're going to be sad to see her go, but also from all of us, we wish you the best of all.
Thank you so much.
Michael Larry?
Thank you.
We're trying to make you cry.
It's working.
Higher Chief Sullivan, evening for the good of the community this evening.
Mr. Mayor, council, over Thanksgiving, we had a fire in a chemical facility in Ferndale, and we had a lot to be thankful for, because all their safety systems and redundant safety systems engaged and contained the fire. A couple of Ferndale and Hazel Park firefighters went in and knocked it down. We called in a hazmat team and did multiple testing. At no time was the public ever in danger, and there were no chemical leaks in the facility. So redundant safety systems and having everyone sprinkle things paid off an extremely big dividends on that day, because it could have been a real mess. They were mixing anywhere from 10 to 12 chemicals into piping, from many acids and bases to formaldehydes and other things, so had those all mixed and been on fire, we would have had a very large mess on our hands. But that worked out really well, so just a big thanks to a company who follows through with all their safety protocols and makes sure their systems and redundant systems are in play pays off big time.
Kudos to your guys as well.
Thank you. And then Sherilyn, it's been an honor.
Thank you, chief.
I won't make you cry.
Right back at you. I have one question for you.
Sure.
How many phone calls did we receive from the implosion of the Southfield Building?
I don't believe we received any. I was going to Chief Collins. I don't believe we received any. I did, my alarm didn't go off. I was supposed to be there, I wanted to see it.
I would have thought so. It sure was a noise.
I heard a couple people in Pleasant Ridge that it shook their house.
It shook mine.
Did it?
Yeah, I went to the window, I'm like, what? What world?
Seventeen stories dropping to the ground is a lot of weight, so I'm sure we're on a plate that we all share deep underneath us, but no calls.
Thanks, chief. Joe, anything from recreation this evening?
I'd just like to take a minute and echo what Brett and Rachel had to say earlier from the Boys and Girls Club. It has been a wonderful experience. The feeling is definitely mutual. Their staff is amazing, they're doing a wonderful job with the students. They've helped us out quite a bit. We recently had our breakfast with Santa, and their teens came in and rocked our concessions and rocked our cooking pancakes for all the kids. They did a great job, we received many compliments. They also helped out with our Hilton Fall Festival, which helps them in turn. They have a leadership program, which I don't think Rachel mentioned, that requires their students to do a number of community service hours throughout the year, which is perfect, because we have quite a few events that we need volunteer hours for. So just like to echo what they said, it's been great. And again, Sherilyn, we will miss you, and I wish you nothing but the best for the future.
Appreciate that, Joe, thanks.
Lloyd, anything from DPW? We're done picking up leaves, right?
No leaves, no, we're done with that. I just have two quick updates for council on our two ongoing projects. One is the East Nine Mile Project. Last week, all the underground work was completed. This week, they're finishing up a little bit of concrete work, and then for the remainder of the week, you will see very little activity as they wait for the concrete to cure. Everything going as anticipated and weather cooperating, which so far it has, they should be done and wrapped up before the holidays. And so next week, once the concrete cures, you'll see a little bit of restoration, some will take place in the spring, but some striping still has to be done, and the temperatures have to cooperate in order to get that done. When we started this project, we had two main goals. One was to save money, which, as council knows, when we split the projects and rebid them, we did save a little over $80,000. And the second was, is to try to shorten up the timeframe, and so that it wouldn't impact our special events. By this project finishing now, prior to the end of the year, it sets us up very well for the next phase of the project, which will be mostly just a milling and paving project, which will go much quicker, so that will work out very well for us. The other is, I think the community has quite a bit of interest, based on some of the comments and emails that I've been getting, and that's the traffic signal at Marshall Illinois. What has happened is, on the 2nd of November, which was a late Sunday night, we had a driver come through and completely totaled the intersection. Typically, this type of project would take anywhere from six, eight months, possibly more, depending on the location, to design, bid, and construct. I have to really commend our engineer for the work that they've done, HRC, Brad Shepler. They, we asked them to rush this project, the entire intersection had to be redesigned. I'm happy to report that we actually already opened the bids on Friday, and the winner has been selected, the low bid has been selected, and the, this morning, I submitted both, to both insurance companies, the cities and the driver, to be reimbursed for those funds, and we anticipate that project being done prior to the end of January. So we've taken a six, eight-month project and narrowed it down considerably, and we look forward to getting that back and operational.
Did we consider at all just retaining the four-way stop?
The four-way stop?
Yeah, that's there now, the temporary solution.
It's temporary, yes, until the signal gets backed up.
Did we consider just keeping it a four-way stop?
We have not, there is a process to go through to do that. It appears, based on the community's interest and the proximity to the school, that it probably warrants keeping.
What's that?
There's not many people following it, and that was going to be my question. Is there any, I don't know if this is a question for the police chief or you, but is there anything that we, I think people aren't used to it or something, they're not following it. Is there anything that we can do, either in flags or blinkers or something, to make that more noticeable?
Mr. Mayor, we...
You have? Sorry.
We had a rollover. We had a rollover over there.
We did, we had three accidents, in addition to the fourth accident, the closet, we had three additional, there were one, one of which was a rollover.
Yep, I saw that one, okay.
All right, thanks, Lloyd.
Very good.
And Joe, anything from the chief innovation officer, soon-to-be interim city manager's office?
That's my announcement.
Okay. Say it in the mic, please, just, no, on this.
I do look forward to serving as the interim city manager in April's stead. I also wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Sherilyn on her future endeavors, and thank you for all of your awesome work. The Von Trapp family will be congratulating you next. A long farewell. And happy holidays to city council and everybody in the community.
Thank you, Joe. And it does remind me, because I've gotten like three texts already, somebody made the comment about April leaving, so just to reiterate, it's maternity leave, it's not, she's not going to Milwaukee or leaving the city employ, she's going on maternity leave. Sherilyn, you get, you get one last shot.
Oh, I just want to invite everyone out to the WAB Thursday night at 5:30 for my going-away party.
We'll be there.
Great, awesome. All right, April?
As noted, I am, this is my last council meeting, I will be returning, the next council meeting I will be at will be March 23rd, and I am going to be on maternity leave, spending some time with our new daughter, if she decides to ever come. But with that, you know, Joe is taking over during my absence, and I look forward to having a few months off with the baby, but I will look forward to coming back as well, and I appreciate all the support that council has given me throughout this pregnancy. So thank you very much, and I will see you in March 23rd.
All right. Dan, you had a lively night tonight. Anything else?
Actually, I'd like to thank council for their questions on the menorah issue, the First Amendment issues, it's a very complicated area of the law. Look forward to assisting council in the new year as it relates to addressing that issue on a going-forward basis. And then, I would like to extend my best wishes to Sherilyn. It's been a pleasure working with her. I know that you're going to Milwaukee, but we're going to think about you, and we're really going to miss you, and we wish you all the best, or I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Dan?
It seems like we've been saying goodbye for two months, but I wish you the best, you've been fantastic here. And, you know, it's just not, I have full faith in Marty, it's just not going to be the same without you, so you'll certainly be missed, so make sure you keep in touch. And then lastly, I just want to wish everybody a very safe and happy holiday season.
Councilman Lennon?
Yes, I too echo the same sentiment. This is Sherilyn, she sure has updated our clerk's office. It was a little inadequate, you know, wasn't automated. You've done wonders, so, good luck at the Schatz Peru in Milwaukee. Some of you might be too young to remember that. And wish you well, we'll see you Thursday night.
Thank you.
Okay, and April, good luck. Merry Christmas to everybody, and happy and safe New Year. Merry Christmas to everybody and happy and safe New Year.
Thanks, Dean. Councilman Pollocka?
This is the last meeting of the year, so I have a few things. First off, a couple of years ago, before I came on council, I stood in front of council and wanted to know why our clock tower wasn't working. And most people said, what clock tower? And there actually is a two-story brick chimney that we utilize as a clock as well. And lo and behold, a couple of weeks ago, the DPW went out and fixed that clock.
Shut up, badger.
And it's yours.
Really?
Yeah. So thank you very much to our incredible DPW that just goes out and fixes things before they're even told to fix something. Jeannie Davis mentioned the historic tour. I wanted to thank all the sponsors and tour guests. We had over 50 people go through the homes listed, and we raised over $1,500 for the historical society. And speaking of historic, I just want to share my sentiments and my disappointment with the demolition of the first church of Ferndale. And that has resulted me in starting to do some research into possibly creating a historic commission. So with, I've already contacted, Sherilyn has assisted me in getting more than 100 pages worth of documents over the past 20 years. I have a lot of reading over the holiday vacation. So with council's permission, I would like to continue forward with researching this and then bringing back some thoughts and ideas of the creation of historic commission for Ferndale. Lastly, Sherilyn, I am so going to miss you. You have been such an incredible asset to the city, but you've been a wonderful friend of people that don't. And I know this isn't really goodbye. We might not see each other all the time, but I know that you and I will keep in touch, and I want to wish you the best.
Thank you very much. Gosh, you guys are making it very difficult. I'm going to miss you all very much.
I'll miss you too, by the way. I have a pregnant brain.
I understand completely.
Everybody was hearing, so we will miss you very much.
We'll be talking.
Councilwoman Piana?
April, I know you're going to be a great mom, because you handle the six of, five of us, very skillfully, and I can only imagine that your baby will be easier than us. So congratulations on the new addition to your family, albeit not yet arrived. And Sherilyn, I know you're going to be awesome wherever you land next. So live long and prosper in your new adventure. And I do wish everybody a safe and happy holidays. Unfortunately, I'm going to add some sad news to this. Lame duck session is still in place for one more week, and this is the opportunity where cities can possibly get screwed a little bit more. Sorry for my language, but that's kind of how I feel about our lame duck session currently going on up in Lansing. Please call your legislators, particularly about the transportation bill, which not only undermines revenue sharing for cities, also reduces funding for our schools, which are already hanging on with the funds that they have. And of course, we need new revenues to pay for our roads. You can't move around money and expect to have improvements to our roads. So I encourage everybody to call their senators and let them, and House representatives, to let them know how they feel about the current bills on the floor for one more week. Who knows? We may get a gift, or we may get a lump of coal. So we will see what happens. So please call your legislators and let them know how you feel. And I hope everybody has a safe and happy, yes, holiday and happy New Year.
And I will wrap up with a few things. First of all, Sherilyn, thank you very much for all you've done, not only to modernize our processes, but to bring your sunshine to our city hall. Thank you. I have only one requirement, is that you can't become a Brewers fan or anything crazy like that.
Oh, no, no cheese heads, none of that.
Okay, thank you.
No offense.
April, good luck. Hurry back, okay? That's all I have to say about that. Speaking of lame duck, there is actually a bill that's still floating in Lansing that you didn't mention, and that is, I think it's called the Religious Freedom Act. I call it the License to Discriminate Act. But there's going to be a very large rally here in Ferndale on Thursday at City Hall at 7:00 PM. And so if you would like to lend your voice with myself and maybe hundreds of others who are going to be here on this Thursday at 7:00 to express our displeasure with that particular piece of legislation, come by City Hall Thursday at 7:00. We would love to see you. Otherwise, I would just like to say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year to all of our residents, and our meeting is adjourned.
You have to go in closed session. Closed session.
That's correct.
It is not adjourned.
We are not adjourned. Can I do that? Yes.
Somebody got it in front of them.
All right, unadjourned, because we, yes, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I do.
The rest of you can go home, we can't. I'm sorry. You moved?
I moved to go into closed session.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Piana?
To consider material exempt from air.
Yes, to consider material exempt from discussion or to closure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCO 15.268.
Can I add to that? Can we take a 15-minute break before there are 10-minute breaks?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? That's five minutes is fine.
Yes. If you second it.
I second it.
All right, you second it. All in favor, Mike, we need a roll call.
We probably totally screwed it up for you.
All in favor, I mean, councilmembers, do the roll, please.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. We are in closed session.
With a five-minute break.
With a five-minute break. Thank you. All right.
Which is this one?
This one.
What's that?
This one.
I noticed that. I'm like, wow, I should threaten to leave now.
Oh, I don't know.
Was it?
Yeah.
I'm pulling that stuff back.[1590.16]